This evening, prior to our regular session of council, we will be having a public hearing on the planned unit development at University of State called Grand Vista. Tonight, we have Lance Rep, University of State's representative before us, and he is going to give us a short presentation on what the Grand Vista section of University of State is going to be like. Then, anyone that would wish to ask questions of Mr. Rep or make any comments, we're here to hear them. Tonight's your public hearing. Thanks, Lance.
My name is Lance Rep. I'm with University of State, which is a development that also is, well, we're here tonight for Grand Vista Village, which is a private gated community. And this is a kind of an outline on it. If I flip the page here, it's this section right here, and this is Route 682. I don't know if people can see. As you start up Boulevard, it's the, on the right. It's where the house is now, sits on the hill that you can see as you're driving up through the road. We've been through the Planning Commission and the Shade Tree Commission and Disabilities, and had one committee meeting with you, with the council. And it's going to consist of 72 units, and there'll be three-story brick units. You drive around back and enter, which would be your basement. If someone's coming to visit you, they would park out front in their sidewalks, and you come into the main floor. Each unit will have a option to have its own individual elevator that goes from the basement up to the second floor. The first phase of it, there'll be four, or 10 four-unit buildings. We expect these to be of high quality, all brick units. The gated community will have an entrance gate here and right here as you come up the Boulevard. As we've been working with Burgess and Neipols, they've come up with a couple of suggestions on changing just a little bit of this entry road here. And by doing that, I think Paul made a comment about the bike path access last time I was here. That will enable us to do that, to work that in there, too. As far as all the utilities and everything, they'll be underground. We have a few street lights. The rest of the lighting is going to be with individual mailbox-type unit poles that are in the front yards by the sidewalks. They're around seven foot tall. Same thing we're using for the mailbox and light on University of State Boulevard. These won't have the mailbox part of it itself, it'll just be the pole and the light. We'll have a clubhouse that has a swimming pool and community, like, meeting rooms and stuff, kitchen, and be similar to the Villas at High Point, except be a little bigger. We have a little more room to put it up there. John Valentour is our local architect. Chenové and Pessine out of Columbus is our engineer, who's helped us on a lot of the other things of the project. Underground utilities. I think that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Questions from council. Member Wile.
So you said four 10-unit buildings in Phase One. Which side is that going to be on?
Actually, Paul, what we're going to do is when we come up the road, we'll just kind of look to the top. The clubhouse area, we're going to develop this hub first, around the clubhouse, and then we'll probably come this way, and then we'll go toward Dr. Connors' house will be the last direction we pan out.
Okay. And you were talking about putting an access to the bike path, and that was going to be on the north side?
That'll be right in here. The bike path is actually coming up the hill here off of Varned Road, and then joins University of State's Boulevard, right there. And then the bike path continues on out.
Okay. So this is access to the University of State's bike path?
Bike path, yeah. Not the city's bike path.
Member Bishop.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You've probably explained this many times, but I wasn't here, and maybe some citizens didn't hear that either. Now, so this is kind of like a townhouse development?
Right. Be four units to a, or four buildings to a unit.
Okay. And then, and the units are basically vertical?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what's the rationale or thinking behind having it a gated community? Is it the first one in Athens, pretty much?
Is it? Mayor? Yeah.
Yeah. So what, I was just thinking, what's the thinking behind needing a wanted?
We're developing this as an upper-scale community, and we're just, by making it a gated, it gives it a little more upscale nature to it.
Is there, like, security there at the gate? Or is it?
It'll just be a punch card type thing, or...
If someone would have a visitor, are they able to push a button in the house and let them in that way?
Right. There'll be a code system that lets them in, or obviously, they can get down and meet them if that wasn't the case. And we'll have, there'll be a lockbox there with a security key for fire department, and similar to what we did at High Point Village for the clubhouse.
Just kind of a follow-up. Have you done a marketing study or anything to see if this kind of a thing would appeal to this community? Or are you appealing to others?
Yeah, we've done quite a few marketing studies. And one of the biggest things that they told us in the marketing studies that we've done is that they're saying we should have anywhere from four to six different types of product going at once in this project. And obviously, it takes a lot of upfront money to do that, so we haven't been able to do that. But the next phase of residential that I talked about a couple of meetings back was more of a medium-priced home. So we're trying to do this in sections. We got the condos now that are very moderately priced, and then we'll have an intermediate, and then this will be the high end of it. And we'll do the same thing for housing, too.
Approximately, what's the high end of this?
These, they probably go from anywhere from $275 to $325, $330.
Other council members? Member Sands.
Lance, could you remind us, are these condominiums or are they simple townhouses?
Condominiums.
This will be a condominium townhouse?
Rental-only? Or, I'm sorry?
No. Condominium, purchase, use.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there'll be a set of homeowners documents, similar to High Point's, that obviously, there'd be more to cover because of the private gated community and the roads and streets and upkeep and all that kind of stuff. So that language will have to be different than the normal condo that we do on the other side of the street.
Other comments from council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comments or ask Mr. Rep questions? No one?
Jennifer Simon with the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce. I just, you know, the feasibility question was asked. From an economic development point of view, we hear that a lot from employers, that they need that, this kind of housing for executives they may be recruiting in, or to just keep some of the executives that they have in the community. So we definitely support this kind of project.
Thank you. And Lance Wallid, is a gated community, it is not a fenced community, is that correct?
No.
Yeah?
There'll be small...
What's the distinction?
The distinction is, to drive a car in takes a security pass. To walk in does not.
Right. And that's the comment, I think, Paul was kind of getting around last time, was that, you know, how do you get to the bike path if you've got a gate there and stuff? So, no, we're not making it, that's not the intention to completely see what all...
It's a security issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Paul?
And part of my concern of that is that we're trying to make a pedestrian-friendly city, and yet, the dialogue last time was, this is going to be the only ingress and egress, there's going to be a car. And that's why I was concerned about access to a bike path. I think I mentioned, too, how the elevator up earlier is how somebody who, from this community, can get down to the golf course without getting in the car as well.
Right.
And that was one of my concerns, is because you're trying to emphasize golfing, they have to get there, so...
Right. And that's something we, I told you, we talked to them, and kind of take their idea, and don't have it on paper yet, but the idea's been agreed upon.
Other comments? Chamber has comments tonight, huh, Larry?
Larry Payne with the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to echo what Jennifer said. In addition, as you know, I know a lot of people in the community, been around for a long time. And all ends of condos would be very welcome by especially our senior citizens in the area, and that's what I want to address here briefly. Marietta is part of a study by AARP, and they are urging cities, as an economic development tool also, to reach out to the baby boomers, who, I am one, and I think several on council are, as we get to that age. And I think this might be more on the upper end, but what they're urging is to have towns that are open for the senior citizens to stay, or move in. And they're emphasizing moving in. Jack Moeburg, who was the president of the Marietta Chamber for a long time, was leading their effort down there. Marietta's a great place, but I think Athens is a great place, too. So I think in our long-term planning, this is something that we need to think about from the administration and from the development side, is all facets of interest for our senior citizens. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Paul?
No, not you, to Lance, actually. With that in mind, you were saying these are three-story condos, so are they mostly up and down? Is that the case?
Right.
Okay, so...
They have an elevator.
And they have the elevator.
Oh, they have an elevator, okay.
No, you can have an elevator.
You can have an elevator.
If you choose not to have an elevator, they're designed so that on each floor where the elevator stops...
Okay.
...is a closet.
Okay.
But the shaft and everything, it's built to have it. For a simple reason, if you buy one, you don't want an elevator, you get ready to sell it, and I'm going to buy it, I have the option, I can put the elevator in. So that's, thinking on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other comments? Seeing none. It's about 12 minutes after 7:00. We will be back at 7:30 with a regular session of Athens City Council. Good evening. It's, welcome back to Athens City Council. It's Monday, July 2nd, 2007. It's on our about 7:30 PM. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Communications. One item that I would like to mention is, next Monday at 7:15, July 9th, we will have a public hearing on the CDBG grant. Member Bishop.
I move that we, Mr. President, I move that we amend the agenda to move the one-reading resolutions forward in the agenda to this point.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the agenda to basically alter the order, as I understand it. Item number seven are two one-reading resolutions, and you're making a motion to bring those forward ahead of Ordinance 6107?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been amended. Member Patterson?
I have two communications that I'd just like to allude to. I won't read them to you, but Arts West has received information that the $25,000 that they were hoping for from the Cultural Facilities Commission has been approved, and that was the one that was being held up due to property taxes. So that issue has been resolved, and the check's in the mail. The other piece that I wanted to just point out is that the Consumer Confidence Report for the Water Department is out. It's quite outstanding, and the centerfold is the description and discussion of the Wellhead Protection Program to guide the city in terms of protecting the water. It's got some excellent suggestions in terms of hazardous waste disposal, and lots of information for not just businesses, but for residents in terms of protecting our water.
Number Sands.
Mr. President, I have a communication from our treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, regarding her estimated interest income projections for 2006, the year that we just passed. She had projected $243,000 in interest income. We actually took in $349,074, about $106,000 more than she was then projected, because interest rates began to rise at the end of the year. She has made that correction to last year's receipts, and it will be carried forward. And we are asking the treasurer to come give us a full report at a meeting soon.
Good. Quick, let's spin up. Member Wile.
Actually, two items. One, Carol, if somebody wanted to get one of these reports, where would they go? Do you know, Fan?
You should have received one in the mail.
Okay. And if they didn't, they should?
To the Water Department.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. I would move that we accept the financial reports for April and May.
Second.
Okay. I could have sworn we had done April, but I didn't see it in my notes, and nobody else did. So we're doing both months together.
Is there any further discussion on accepting the auditor's financial reports for the month of April and May? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The reports have been accepted. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Abel.
Just a reminder to council and the public that 4th of July is Wednesday. That will necessitate, of course, not only the parade and fireworks, but delay to recycling and trash pickup for the Wednesday and Thursday customers. Stay tuned to the government channel for any details on that. Also, the paving program continues. Press releases are issued on those on a daily basis. And again, the government channel is a good source, or your local radio stations would be good for that, so if you could keep up to date as to what traffic situation may be within your area.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Questions for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hecht.
No reports. She just said...
Okay. Onto ordinances for third reading.
Reservations.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We got them amended and got them moved, and I forgot to move them myself. Okay. Our one-reading resolutions. Resolution 1107, a resolution requesting the Athens City Planning Commission consider amending Table B, off-street parking requirements and the zoning code, introduced by all members of council who was speaking to this tonight. Member Bang.
Mr. President, a few weeks ago, we discussed this question, and at that point, I think there was some considerable interest in having the Planning Commission amend the zoning code to require the off-street parking spaces provided to the tenant, the required off-street parking spaces to be provided for the tenant as part of the rental fee. And the idea would be that there are so many relationships in parking spaces that it's very difficult to figure out where things are. This seemed like a simpler way to say what we said already. It doesn't generally happen that this is an issue in the more distant parts of Athens. The places where it's a problem is exactly where we have the largest parking issues.
Move to adopt.
I'm sorry. Move to adopt our 1107?
Second.
I just said what I was saying.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1107. We've had some discussion. Is there more? All those in favor of adoption, Resolution 11?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Resolution 1207, a resolution recommending duties, goals, and objectives in the hiring and oversight of an events planner. Member Bishop.
This, this...
Don't do that. Oh. Can I move adoption?
I move adoption of Resolution 1207.
Second.
This resolution basically articulates what some of the goals, duties, and objectives are for an events planner, which relates to Ordinance 7507, which we will discuss and hopefully adopt later in a meeting. It's my understanding that City Safety Services Director, who would actually supervise this position, was interested in understanding exactly what council was looking for in this particular position. And I just want to emphasize that the major duty of this position is basically to generate some funds to offset city costs. As we all know, truly know, that Halloween costs the city about $80,000 a year. And we're, it seems to me, we're kind of at a crossroads, where we either continue to kind of eat that cost and complain about it, and feel that we're, you know, spending money on something that maybe we shouldn't be spending money on, and taking a more proactive approach, and trying to generate some funds for that position. And as everybody knows, sometimes you have to spend money to make money. And this particular position, and we'll talk about that later in the resolution, I mean, in the ordinance, would basically oversee the development of a kind of community-friendly event, and work closely with the city, so that safety considerations would be primary, working with Ray, that would be a very important step. There would be an advisory council of people who have been involved in Halloween, for example, Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Student Senate, et cetera, and interested citizens, to oversee also the work of this person. And they would develop kind of policies around this event. So basically, we would take a kind of a leadership role, rather than just kind of cleaning up after whatever happens over that weekend. And the duties include forming a management advisory council, working closely with that advisory council and the city to develop a vision and policies, develop an event plan and a management plan, develop a sponsorship program, secure sponsors, develop and manage a system of accepting donations, managing a volunteer program, working with various groups to develop and manage activities, developing and managing a budget, promoting the event, and promoting it in a way that the city, you know, would be comfortable with, and documenting the process, and submitting a post-festival report. And there are some short-term goals, but the one I really want to emphasize is that this position, if we decide to go with it, would basically have as its absolute objective to generate funds in a manner that would be fit with what the city wants to offset city costs, and it would significantly reduce taxpayer expense for this particular event. So I did want to ask also, as we discuss it, ask Ray if he felt that this was, you know, I want to say, detailed enough to feel that you would have direction if this were adopted.
That's a pretty long list of items.
Yes. Yes. It's an ambitious, ambitious set, and as we know, this is the first year, and, you know, there wouldn't be an expectation that in the next five months, you know, this Halloween would generate all 80,000 or 96, as the case may be. It would begin to certainly pay its own way, and also recoup back some of the expenses of the city.
Comments by other members of council? Member Wile.
Can you pull it out here again? I lost it, Michelle. Okay. Again, part of the, what Pujinka was saying was the idea of offsetting costs, but in the second paragraph here, it says, "Purpose of contract to develop event that generates revenue to offset safety and other city costs." In one sense, I would emphasize in my mind the safety aspect of this. The idea is to generate the money so we can have a better, safer Halloween, if that's the case, because that's really the first thing, what we're hearing from Ray and the Service Safety Director, which is a concern for a lot of the citizens. What I'm hearing many times is that we shouldn't be spending revenue on this, but the safety aspect is what we usually spend the revenue on, so. It is a big bill that has to be done here. Hopefully, we can get somebody who can do it. I know there's been discussion of what those qualifications would be for somebody, but that's another thing.
Other comments? Member Phillips.
I continue to oppose the creation of this position or contract. I have not heard anyone come up to me and say that they want the city to take greater ownership of the Halloween event. And while there's been some verbal discussion here about how it has to be an emphasis on safety and recouping our costs related to safety, if you look at the list of duties, it includes promoting the event, managing volunteers, sponsorship, event planning, developing a vision and policies, it's a lot more than recouping costs to help address safety concerns. And I think that what we've discussed in the past, and what I continue to believe, is that any effort to change the event or make it be a different event really should be a community volunteer-based effort. And for us to spend money trying to change the event to own it or to manage it isn't what I'm hearing from any of my constituents that they want, so I can't support it.
Other comments? Member Flowers.
I have a question about the language in the resolution. As I know, we've discussed, there's been a difference between the Advisory Board and the Advisory Council as those three individual descriptions that we were given. I just wanted to be clear, it says in the last line of Section 1, the second paragraph, the contractor will work closely with an advisory board, and then it just says, "The duties include forming a management advisory council." Are those the same thing?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I think that's just a typo of some sort.
The intention was that they...
Yeah, it's one thing.
Same.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Patterson?
One thing that I will point out, especially to Councilwoman Phillips, there is nothing in this that precludes, excludes the idea that it could be the formation of a not-for-profit. We deliberately did not include that in the language, but it doesn't say it either way. We felt very strongly, actually from your comments, that we didn't want a document that would make that kind of decision for us, so that that might be a natural outgrowth of the position. And the same thing goes for the type of sponsorships. It's really not spelled out for those reasons, to keep an open and objective approach.
Other comments? Member Bishop.
In addressing, Member Phillips is noting that there are a lot of responsibilities here, and it's not just to make money. I think that's one of the reasons that this was, has been talked about, and I hope carefully thought out and discussed with the city, that it's just not a matter of, like, making money, and who's going to come up with, you know, a lot of big bucks. The idea is that there is a vision created, excuse me, for the event with input from citizens, which, so we control what it looks like. I know that there's been talk about beer gardens, you know, what if the sponsor were not beer? What if it were something that was actually, you know, a soft drink, or an energy drink, or something? So I think that is... So I think that is why there are so many, that's why the emphasis is on planning and developing the management plan and not just, you know, how to make a quick buck off it, because I think if it's a city event, or if the city at least supports it and helps control it, then controlling what it looks like is going to be really important for this position.
Are there any other comments, Members Sanders?
Mr. President, I should probably say something at this point, and like our council member Phillips, I've heard from a surprising number of citizens in Athens, and I have yet to have one tell me that they think the planner is a good idea. As Ms. Alast from the Visitors Bureau, Convention Visitors Bureau suggested that somebody needed to take ownership of the festival, and I think, I have not heard anybody, as a citizen, say that they think we should be representing them and taking ownership of this event.
Member Bishop.
I know that change is hard, and, you know, I'm sure we haven't heard from every single citizen. And I just want to say, you know, I had a boss once who said, essentially, he asked me how he thought the operation of the organization was going, and I thought, "You're asking me, you know, I'm new." And he said, "You're most valuable when you're new." Now, I just want to say that I know there are a lot of entrenched attitudes and feelings about Halloween, but to me, if we look at it really objectively, this is a cost to the city. Everyone complains about the cost to the city. It's 80,000. It costs so much. So it seems to me we can either sit here and say, "Okay, now it's going to cost more next year," and complain about it, I'm sorry, or we can say, "Maybe we should do something about it." And if we invest this year some money, and we have an objective person who's paid to study the situation and carry out these duties, it seems to me then we'll at least taken a positive step in trying to solve the problem and be in a position next year to also make some decisions about it. So I'm just saying, maybe if we could look at it objectively and say, you know, what can we do about this event? And maybe it's different from what we did in the past, but maybe that's not so bad.
Other comments? And keep in mind, you'll also, we'll give you an opportunity. We also have an ordinance that people will be able to comment on, too. Please. You can never say too much about Halloween, not here in Athens. Your name and address, please.
My name is Joe Radwin. I live at 3720 State Route 681 in Lee Township. So I'm not a resident of the city, but I've met most folks in this room, including most of the people behind the carpet, and I'm here as a communitarian, a volunteer for various organizations, including the Paw Paw Festival, Sustainability Festival, the Wire, and of course, Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee. Before I actually volunteered with the committee, I also had experience vending on the streets of Athens back in the heyday. My apologies for being so dirty I work today, and then I actually had to leave a Wire meeting early in order to be here. I was hoping I didn't have to be here, but I feel obliged to come share some of my thoughts with you. As a volunteer, I speak for myself, not as a representative of the Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee. Those are the folks who've been creating Halloween in Uptown Athens for 10 or 20 years. As a volunteer, I donate over 30 hours a year of my time, just on the weekend of the event. That does include the meetings we go to, and I've seen a lot of you all at the meetings. I really appreciate that. And I've seen students at meetings, but, you know, we're loading trucks and we're, you know, I work a 20-hour day from Friday, Saturday morning to the middle of the morning Sunday, and then we have to unload the trucks and dah dah dah. So with all due respect, I'm thankful for all your participation, and I've seen folks from the Convention and Visitors Bureau there and the Chamber of Commerce at some of the organizational meetings, and we've seen students as well. But last year, I had one student volunteer, and that was somebody that I just kind of finagled, not, people that kept saying, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we want to help." So again, I got to tell you, I agree with the vision and the goals that some of what we're trying to do here tonight espouses. That's something I've been trying to promote. The last time they tried to do a more family-friendly event, I remember there was slush in the streets. So it wasn't, it didn't go over very well, but I still, my vision has always been that it should be a more community-based event, and a kid costume contest during the day, and a broader event. We need to get OU more involved, rather than their hands-off approach. So I agree with your vision, but control is an illusion, especially when you get 20,000 college students. And while I agree that change is hard, it is a process, and I feel like we need to take our time and do this process in a more thoughtful manner. When I looked over the outlines of the, you know, the job description for this position, I mean, the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee does nine to 10 of those things pretty well, actually, including promotion, you know, on and on and on. I agree that it needs to grow and get better, and I don't think that our longtime chair, Jonathan Holmberg, is the right guy for this big job, but let's not rush and throw money at something just because we're losing money. I mean, everybody here knows that for a lot of those city guys, their overtime is a Christmas bonus. And, yeah, it costs money, but, you know, how many guys does it take to zip tie a line up on the, on the clothes office street? I got to remind you about liability issues as well, but the bottom line is, I mean, if people are starting to get paid, hey, I mean, I'll get in line. Let's not rush to judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? And I will ask that we keep our comments to the three-minute limit if we can. Member Patterson.
I just wanted to...
Bob, if you'd like to come towards the mic while she's speaking, we'll go to you right next.
I just wanted to comment that at this point, what we are voting on is...
The resolution.
If we're going to have this position, does this sound feasible?
Yeah, and we'll be back with the ordinance in a little while, but come on, Bob. We can probably get a lot of the comments out of our system now.
Robert Sumney, 20 Briarwood, Athens. I do have to say about this proposed ordinance that it has managed to do something that I have not seen in Athens in a long time. It has managed to unite the city. The people who don't want to lose anything more than $60,000 don't want a planner, and the people who would prefer to have the party pretty much the way it is don't want the planner. So, you know, I don't think that there is a whole broad line of support for this planner to begin with. I really believe that council, once again, is putting the cart before the horse. I think the first thing, and I appreciate that people have said that, "Well, we've talked about this for years, and now the time is to get after this thing and start to make some decisions." But the first thing that I think council should have decided was to define who is the owner of the Halloween event. And once again, we have some people who are trying to make the city the sole owner of an activity. We had the Strouds run, and now we have the Halloween. And frankly, city council should be defining who owns Halloween. And I think the answer should be the city, along with Ohio University, along with Ohio University Student Senate, and that the three parties should be involved in sharing the decision-making, they should be involved in sharing the costs of the event, which would eliminate the need necessarily for a outside sponsor. Some of the things that I don't think council has really commented about publicly, so I don't know if you've considered it, is that once somebody gets a job, they're going to come to the mayor or come to council and ask for a budget beyond the salary. So now we're going to be talking about more expense for this one person. The gentleman who spoke previously makes a very valid point. If you're paying this person now to coordinate some activities, why aren't other people also being paid along the line? So I really think that council has not examined just how far expenses could go beyond what they already are with the addition of a planner. The corporate sponsorship idea also, you know, if you're really trying to make this a local party for the OU students largely, and to keep it fairly peaceful, then, you know, I really question that the corporate sponsorship activity as well, because these people can only grow the event, and they can make it only more unsafe, because they are going to try to recoup their costs. They're going to be bringing in more people from out of town. Again, this kind of addresses the safety issue and really kind of questions whether the planner or whether letting more and more out-of-towners know about Halloween, if that's really going to make it a safe event or not. So I would also like to finally say that I really think also, in terms of timing, that if council was going to propose this kind of an ordinance, they should have done it months ago, because I don't think you really leave the planner a whole lot of time to really show what they can do. I really also kind of question at this point the quality of the person you would get to be the planner with this amount of time to work with, and also the $16,000. I really kind of question whether you're going to get a really a quality-oriented person to be able to do all the things that you want them to do. So, you know, I would hope that council would take these kind of things into consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Are there other comments? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 1207?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I am counting four, three, so the resolution is adopted. Back to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 6107, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Section 7.04.40, processions and parades permit required. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of Ordinance 6107.
Second.
Thank you. Council's familiar with this ordinance as it has been with us for a little while now and has been discussed in committee and in and out of committee. The change in the ordinance pertains to the parades and processions that go on in the city. It was at a request from the Chief of Police that we make these changes to the ordinance, of which, again, everyone has had time with. We read the original ordinance on May 21st of '07. After that, talked to the Law Director, and he had made some additional changes to the amendments to the, or, to the, excuse me, to the code. So as, from recommendations from the Chief of Police and from the Law Director, we have come to know Ordinance 6107, of which I hope we adopt.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Ordinance 6107?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Section 29.06.05 Insurance. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 6807.
Second.
This is the section related to insurance for demolition permits, and at some point previously, the amounts had been taken out, so what we're putting in is that no demolition permit shall be issued until they furnish, furnished proof of liability insurance in the amount of $300,000 per person and a million combined single liability. So we're just putting the amounts back in.
Is there further discussion on Ordinance 68? All in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Now into ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 7007, an ordinance authorizing prior-year expenditures for engineering of the city garage, R-C-R-A closure plan, project number 62, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 7207, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a truck for the Water Department and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 7407, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into a contract for design and construction of a soccer complex, project number 227. Ordinance 7507, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to hire an events planner and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President...
Member Patterson.
I move to suspend the rules on 7507.
Second.
But at the same time, we have an amendment on this that was not in what you read. We amended it at the last council meeting. It's to enter into contract rather than to hire. And that was a...
That's what it says. It says enter into contract.
Can we regard that as a typo? Seeing no objection from council member, no? Member Wild?
No, that's right. I have my notes. That's what we did last time. Just didn't reflect it.
So you are saying that you have no objection to council regarding this?
No.
Yes, I have no objection.
I said your head.
Yes, I have no objection.
You shook her head the wrong way. I was busy reading, sorry.
So we are regarding that as a typo?
Mr. President, the reason for the suspension is just so that if we hired this person, that we have as much time as we can. If the suspension doesn't carry, then we'll vote on it at the next meeting, and they'll have two weeks left.
Motion and second, Member Bishop. Go ahead.
I just wanted to emphasize, like, because we often say hire the person, but I think the amendment from last time, "Enter into the service contract," is critically important language, because it's not an employee, it's a professional services contract, and so I just wanted to emphasize that.
There was quite a discussion on that last time.
Yeah, right.
Member Bing.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm going to vote to suspend, because they have the four votes, but I'm not going to vote for the motion, because they have four votes. We won't have to talk about it again for a while.
But you can never talk about Halloween.
Oh, yes, you can. We've talked about it way too much.
Okay. Is there further discussion?
I wanted to make a comment.
Yes.
This might change your mind, Nancy. I would prefer council have two more weeks and the planner have two less weeks, so I'm not going to be doing the suspension.
So they don't have four. Well...
What is suspension?
Oh, the plot thickens. Yes, Member Bishop.
I would like to encourage Member Flowers to reconsider that.
Member Bishop, I would remind you that this is not a committee meeting. This is a regular session of council where all comments should be regarded towards the ordinance and the motion before the floor.
Yes. And the motion is...
And the motion before the floor is to suspend the rules only.
Okay.
So please refrain from any debate other than that of suspending the rules.
Right. I would like to support suspending the rules, because I believe that this has been discussed at length, and as several people have said, there isn't really that much time left before Halloween, and I'm not sure that much is going to happen on council, I mean, in relation to this issue that might change the idea of suspension, so I would really support suspending the rules and moving one way or another on this.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only on Ordinance 7507? All those in favor of suspending the rules? I'm sorry, yes? Real quick. Okay. Deal.
And again, all due respect, and I agree with the goals that, and now that that's passed, there is an outline for the goals that we're working towards, but I've, "It's an emergency! Halloween's coming in four months! Oh, no! Like, it's never happened before!" I mean, come on, let's think about this and take our time. I found it interesting that three of the four people that supported that outline won't be sitting behind the carpet next year, and I love and respect you all, and I worked on a bit, and I would like to remind you that slow growth is better growth, and change is painful, but it's a process. So let's just all breathe all the way out and take our time and do this, right? Thank you very much.
Other comments on suspension of the rules? Member Bishop.
I'm sorry, I have one. Just, I mean, there may be a sense that we need more input.
Is this on suspension?
Well, never mind. Never mind.
All those in, you'll get a chance to argue, debate the whole ordinance yet.
Okay.
Yet tonight. All those in favor of suspending the rules on Ordinance 7507, signify by raising your hand. hand.
Aye. And I.
I see three. All those not in favor of suspending the rules, I count four. The rules are not suspended.
I'll prescuss it.
Then you write it next week. Ordinance 7607, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 27th and 28th of '07, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Ordinance 7707, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 27th and 28th, 2007, again, Halloween weekend. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 7807, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 27th and 28th, 2007, again, Halloween weekend. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, this ordinance is just one that got lost in the shuffle. We didn't put it with the other two, and it is to suspend the noise ordinance during the festivities. And seeing, oh, a lot of people seem to want nothing to touch Halloween ever. I think we better pass this.
But not tonight. Ordinance 7907, an ordinance to allow alcohol for special events on premises at Arts West facility. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, this ordinance is to put the policies of Arts West in line with those of the Community Center. I did speak with the folks at the Community Center as well as Arts West. And the situation is if, and someone asked, how many times does this occur? Primarily, the beer and wine with the catering has been enacted somewhere around 20 times a year. It's mostly for things like wedding receptions. The other part of this is if a group wished to sell alcohol, that is the point at which they need to get the F-permit and go through the sheriff or the Chief of Police and the mayor and go through that state-approved procedure. So there are kind of two different parts to this. And I've talked with the people, Arts West has pretty stringent policies in terms of if problems occur and so forth, as does the Community Center. And they've got rules in place that to have some control over the situation. And if a group is problematic, they don't come again, they're uninvited. And it has not been a problem at the Community Center. That being said, at Arts West, certainly it adds a little complexity to the administration of that facility. There's another thing to deal with. But I personally don't see it as a revolutionary thing. It just seems like if there are events there that they want to, to me especially with the catering, have alcoholic beverage, they pay an additional deposit on that, and they have rules to follow.
Further discussion on ordinance 79? Yes, Paul?
I did have a conversation with Emily Prince a while back about this, and I was aware the Community Center had the ability to have an alcohol license present on it. I think this is all in all a positive thing. I would like to see sometime the policies, if you have some drawn up, because I don't know what the Community Center has right now, to be truthful. I did go to a school where they used to just like clockwork, they had a student center where they did not have a license and they'd just go through and get an F-license every weekend, which was a lot of work, but it was one way they could actually serve beer on a weekend. Interesting mechanism there. I'm hoping we don't get to that point, but I know the events that she's trying to think of in terms of theater events or even, as you say, catered events, because it is an ex-church, so to speak. And I know we don't have a, we don't allow it in our parks, the way I understand. So there's a differentiation between public indoors and outdoors.
Other comments? Yes?
Okay, forgot. Something you said.
Policies?
The Community Center does have policies, and my point was that Kevin made the point that the Community Center closes at 11, as does Arts West. And occasionally, they will allow a group to extend to 12. But it's not a raucous all-night kind of situation, and I think that that's a tipping point as well. The alcohol policy, which is somewhere in front of me, I'm looking for it, it's very simplistic, and it just says you will pay an additional deposit, you're responsible for all the legalities, you're responsible for carding, and if you don't play by the rules, you won't be back.
Were there any other comments? Yes, Member Sanders?
Member Patterson just mentioned the policy at the Community Center, sometimes extending to midnight. I would just suggest that at Arts West, we keep it at 11, because Arts West obviously is in the middle of the neighborhood.
Right.
Where the Community Center is more separated. Good idea.
Although I will say that occasionally, theater productions go past the 11. Not by much, but...
And probably that neighborhood can cause no problems.
Ordinance 8007, an ordinance approving the final flat of the Grand Vista University of State's planned unit development. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, at this time, I move to table 08007.
Second.
The reason for the tabling is that the letter that we got back from Burgess and Nyepal describes the stormwater and geotechnology plans that they reviewed as conceptual. And we did, when we discussed it in committee, we did discuss the fact that we wanted to have the engineering done and the review by Burgess and Nyepal before first reading. I've allowed it to go ahead and be read once this evening, so that when we bring it off the table, it will be at second reading. And it's my understanding that a lot of that work has been done, and there are some discussions back and forth with Burgess and Nyepal right now, and that Mr. Rep intends to get that to us before next week, so that we can bring it off the table at second reading. If he wants to speak to this while we're discussing the tabling, I would be open to that.
That's fine, and that's fine, but I ask that you keep your comments on the motion to table only.
Right. Kind of caught me off guard tonight, the tabling of this. And I just wanted to reiterate that we have been working with Burgess and Nyepals and Ray and his staff and everything. And we've done the, we've had, I don't know how many meetings and conferences. They issued their first written letter, okay? And our guys are responding to get that stuff. I wasn't under the assumption tonight that I had to have that stuff before the reading. And the reason I'm asking that tonight is if I understand the situation the way it is, and you guys going on vacation for the month of August, if I can't get this through before then, then it looks like sometime in September it's passed, then I got another 30-day waiting period before it comes law. So now we're up into almost October. My suggestion, and I don't know if you can do this or not, but why not continue with the first and second reading with the stipulation that we will have the stuff finalized as quick as I can, you know, maybe before the second reading? But definitely, you can table it and stop at the third meeting. You know, this week's July 4th, so I'll have to call Burgess and Nyepals tomorrow and, you know, to get all that done between now and Monday. And the other thing, too, keep in mind is that even though the council passes this acceptance, I still have a land development permit that I have to have, which requires all this stuff. And that's the first thing we would be doing long before we ever build anything. That land development application has to be signed by Ray and his staff. So there is stop guards in there before. So I'm just asking today if we couldn't keep this process moving, so that I have a chance to read it before you go on vacation for the third time.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to that?
Mr. President, I haven't heard anyone raise substantive concerns about this project itself. I think that this is fairly procedural. We did make it clear during the committee meeting that we needed to have the completed engineering before we would do first reading. So we've already, I think, made a little bit of a compromise by going ahead and reading it this evening. And if we need to hold a special session, I'd be willing to call it, and we could probably find a couple other council members who would do that. So I think we should go ahead and table it and try to get complete applications before we read ordinances.
We have a motion and a second to table ordinance 8007. Is there further discussion on tabling only? All those in favor of tabling the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance 8107, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to provide partial funding for street repair work on Shady Lane. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, we discussed this ordinance last week in committee and also extensively in an earlier committee meeting. This is a somewhat unusual circumstance, because Shady Lane is not inside the city limits. It is in the three-mile area. And at some point during the process of developing this area, the bond was released, the road was not completed, and I think the developer, that particular entity, went into bankruptcy. So the bank owns a lot of the land, but there are some homeowners, and the road is in need of repair. The commissioners last week, I believe, accepted this as a public road. This is, we are not intending to set any precedent here, we're just trying to solve a problem, and it's our intention to recover this money from the property owners through an assessment process if we need to. This is just to get the road fixed.
Other comments? Member Wile?
I noticed we were going up to $10,000. I remember we had a dialogue about it being a percentage of the, has a percentage been determined with the county commissioners of township trustees?
I don't know if that has been specifically worked out. Right now, the estimate of repairs is around $29,000. So this would be about a third.
Other comments? Member Sands?
Mr. President, I actually was not here at the committee meeting where this was discussed extensively, or I would have expressed my concern about this. It may not set a precedent, but I don't see that there's a precedent for this expenditure of city money outside of the city limits. I am not aware that the city is liable for this, and it would be nice, but I can think of a lot of other nice things that we could do for people in the plains. So I'm not in favor of it.
Other comments? Ordinance 8207, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 25, flood damage prevention, Chapter 25.06, definitions and figures, Section 25.06.01, definitions. Again, Member Phillips?
Mr. President, in an earlier discussion, it came to our attention that there wasn't a clear standard for defining value when there were substantial damages or substantial improvements to properties that are in the flood hazard area. So we did discuss this with Bob Eichenberg about what the county does and with the Law Director's Office. The county, if they have to fall back on something, uses the auditor's appraised value, which is likely to be low. So we did put in there two other possibilities for establishing value, just to make there be a clear line when those discussions are happening about substantial improvements. So the sale price of the property within the last five years or a professional appraisal could be used instead of the auditor's value.
Other comments? Member Sands?
Just a question, and I think I know the answer. The ranking of those, does that indicate preference for one of those three?
That may be a question for the Law Director. I don't intend it to.
I'm choosing to ask. Or maybe they could rotate on each copy.
Other comments? Member Wile?
I think that is one of the questions. I mean, do we take each one and average them together? Do we decide to take the mean, the median?
It says any of the following.
So you choose one, and that's it?
Yeah.
Some seem to be better.
They will.
Okay. So that's a question to the Law Director.
Yeah. We should get answers for it. Member Bing?
And I do think that in general, if it's flooding, FEMA may take care of that decision. It's very critical.
They make the decision. Okay. Ordinance 8307, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03, rental dwelling and housing permits, Section 29.03.08, fees. Member Bing?
Mr. President, 8307 is an attempt by council to speed up the collection of our fees for rental, for rental dwelling unit inspections. Somewhere in the vicinity of $25,000 was left uncollected as of the deadline. And although we did put a limit on, a small little slap on the wrist on that in terms of money, I think that several members of council asked for, and the Law Director's Office did research, this failure to pay the permit within one year after the date of its mailing shall result in the cancellation of the rental permit. And they'll be reinstated upon paying all past due amounts, it's sort of like turning off your water after you don't pay your bill for several months, along with a reinstatement fee of $100.
Other comments? Member Bishop?
I was just saying, a year of grace period seems to be very generous.
Yes. We're trying.
How about six months?
Six months? I'd like to know how many are still unpaid. The $25,000, $26,000 was the list from a while ago. I may come back, I'll go ask Teresa again.
Other comments? Member Flowers?
I have a question. I agree with Member Bishop. I think the one-year grace period is a little lenient, but, I mean, we're moving towards making this better. If failure to pay the rental permit fee within that one year happens...
You're out.
I don't know, well, I don't know, yeah, what about the people who have signed the lease and then the permit?
The code says that they put them up at a...
I don't...
O-U-N?
Oh.
They'll be there with the football, I don't know about O-U-N. I thought they could be there with the football team.
So there's language that protects the...
Yes, definitely.
Other comments? Member Wile?
I believe I had a conversation with Teresa Carter at one point last week, and she said most of them, most of them haven't paid at this point.
Since our last discussion.
He's embarrassing the name.
Most of them were delinquents at the time.
Ordinance 8407, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13, general offenses, Chapter 13.04, offenses against public peace, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise. Member Bing?
Mr. President, 8407 was devised in response to two relatively big public problems in my neighborhood, or in my ward. Not necessarily seeking to take one side or the other, but maybe going toward what we'll call mitigation. If you're causing trouble to your neighbors, then solve the problem. I think that's the tenor of what we're doing. So in response to our discussion last time, the two places were the noise that is emitted from an outside garden after 11:00 p.m. at Brony's. The second one was the air compressor problem in residential neighborhoods, and that would be East Elementary is our example, but there are other examples that is certainly not the only one. So I went to the judge, asked him for information, and then I also had Gary, Gary helped me up a lot on this on short notice and got it out using Palo Alto's, a very tony place, ordinance. But anyway, so I'd like to walk through this a minute, looking at definitions. We've defined residential zone within this ordinance, and we also have residential power equipment. My husband would be glad to see that his grinder is safe till 11 o'clock at night. But you also see power saw, sander, drill, grinder, and these are controlled, but this would not, this is not included, although good neighbors probably would require that when you're having a garden party next door, that the generator might need to be turned off. I don't know, but that's a neighborhood issue, not necessarily something we can legislate. The first thing, the judge said suggest, allow there, that was his suggestion under B, under 130410, unnecessary noise. And that means that, just as we said, it seems kind of curious, if you have a band in your backyard, they don't arrest the drummer or the timpani player, if there is such a creature. Instead, they say to the renter... Instead, they say to the renter, "Stop that band." And that's basically what we're saying. Modify the noise or stop it at 11:00. Then we have a definition on two radios and other devices. I suppose radios may be an outdated word, but plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet or exceeds 85 decibels. Now, just to get a handle on what that means, that would mean that it would be like a printing shop, which is an archaic thing, only a small number of us oldies would know what that sounds like. A noisy manufacturing site, a loud machine shop, or a construction site. That's the kind of noise we would want prohibited after 11:00 p.m. And that's between 12:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 to 7:00, Sunday through Friday. And so we put that additional exceeds 85 decibels. Continuing over to vocal noise. One of the things that the judge suggested we add was escalating vocal noise in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet or exceeds 85 decibels from the building structure or vehicle, which is located, is evidence of the violation. Okay, so we have still the walkaway test there, but we also have this new 85-decibel construction site level at 11 o'clock at night noise amount. The next section is more of a, let's, why can't we just get along, kind of the Rodney King section here, where we're saying, "Why not consider a baffle?" And for a while, the law director was hassling me about baffle, but he Googled it and found out that there are baffles galore online. So you can find any number of ways to mitigate the noise after 11:00. So the people on North Congress Street can have their sleep, and the people can have their party at the same time. And what a good world it would be if we could do that. Okay, then, sounding-producing machine animal device is there also with a noise level of 85 decibels at any point outside of the property residential plane. And some of these are, then you talk, use of operation when you sound produced by any machine, animal, or device, except residential power equipment between eight to... And this is getting at the problem with East Elementary. Once again, good neighbors, we get a balance between the needs of the school to have an air conditioning unit, which we all applaud. We'd even like one in here, actually, wouldn't we? And the needs of the neighbors to have a peaceful environment. I mean, what else can we ask for but neighbors being neighborly? And so then we have, that's basically the proposal that we have to amend the noise ordinance.
That's ordinance 8407. Further comments? Member Sands.
Residential zone means all lands located in R1 and R2. Why not R3?
I think that's the way it was in the initial ordinance, unless it's been changed. We can check that. Debbie, she's got the book. She's gonna look. You changed it last year till 10 o'clock, remember?
We changed the times, but I didn't know that R3 wasn't in there. Obviously, I think it should be included.
Okay, well, we can amend it on first reading if you think so. Is it there?
It doesn't talk about residential zones at all.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Is that a new definition?
Yep.
Yep, we did it for. So you wanna include?
I'd like to move to change it.
To add R3?
Add R3.
Second.
Motion and second to amend ordinance 8407 to add residential 3. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Anyone else care to weigh in? Member Phillips.
I just have a question, Nancy. You talked about baffles, and I don't see them in here. Is it just something you discussed as a way people would cope with the ordinance? Or am I missing something?
Baffles aren't in here. Oh, my goodness.
Okay. Where is it?
No, it's under D. In addition, any offender previously convicted of a violation of this section shall use temporary legal noise baffles, probably need a comment there somewhere, to keep the noise level within the legal limits. So in other words, be good neighbors. That's all we ask. Everybody can have their...
Member Bishop.
Using baffles only if you've been previously convicted? In addition...
That can be a mitigating or a solution.
That's what we're talking about, mitigation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it would be great if somebody would design it from the outset.
Right. But even if you haven't been previously convicted, you can use a baffle.
That would be even more neighborly.
Well, I know. That's why I thought that was odd.
Other comments? Member...
One of the things that everyone needs to understand about this ordinance is that it will be a complaint-driven ordinance. You have to do a formal complaint to the code office or to whomever in order to enact this. And one of the reasons I point that out, because there are things, I find it a little bit concerning under vocal noise in a manner to be, as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet. And I'm thinking, again, it's that same neighborhood that we're in, just an odd configuration of sound. I can hear conversations from my neighbors, and they are more than 50 feet. So if I wanted to, I could call and complain because it does violate the law. There are other instances of people who practice their musical instruments. They are well over 50 feet, and I, oh, the drum chest. I think the drummer moved. But anyway, there are people who practice musical instruments, and they can be heard. Do we want complaints filed against these people? I don't know. That's part of my concern. I think it's a good law in general, but those sort of rights concern me somewhat that it might indeed be something that could be abused by the complainers.
Any one? Ordinance 84. Ordinance 8507, an ordinance amending ordinance 05107 Authorizing Street Paving and Repair. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend ordinance 8507, sorry.
Second.
The amendment comes from Ray Hazlitt, said need to change around some of the numbers in the ordinance. If you have it in front of you, Section 1, where it says $233,000 from the wheel tax fund, actually needs to say $246,000. Cross out the $73,000 from State Highway Fund, and the, change it back to the $50,000 from the State Highway Fund. So back to $50,000 from the State Highway and an increase to $246,000 from the wheel tax.
Any comments on the amendment as proposed? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 08507 has been amended and read for the first time. Member Flowers?
Move adoption. Thank you. Move adoption of ordinance 85, or not adoption.
First reading.
Just gonna explain it, sorry. The, as, thank you, Paul, for discussing this last week in committee. As you know, I think everyone got a copy of the spreadsheet where you can see a lot of the increases took place for the total amount of the paving, mainly in the cost of the asphalt and in the brick rehab, which is why we're seeing a request for an additional amount. Sorry.
Ordinance 8607, an ordinance determining to proceed with sidewalk construction and improvement on Stewart Street as described in Resolution 0607 and declaring an emergency. Again, member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, this is the Stewart Street sidewalk assessment procedure. We are just in the next step of the process, which is just the ordinance to proceed with the improvements, or with the construction, rather.
Other comments? Member Wild.
So this has taken, what, two years now, I'd say? About?
Yeah.
I don't know what a sidewalk it's gonna be. Ordinance 8707, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 9 General Regulations, Chapter 9.12 Streets and Sidewalks, Section 9.12.22 Sidewalks and Gutters Enforcement Routing. Member Wild.
This is that ordinance that was brought up a couple years ago, and I've brought up a few times before we had our litter control officer on hand. Essentially, this is to take control of, the owner of property is supposed to take control of the sidewalk in terms of cleanliness and 18 inches past the gutter. This was brought up by the Clean Committee, recommendation of the Clean Committee two years ago, year ago, year and a half, I think. We took out the devil strips, which, if you go to Wikipedia, are the zones in between your sidewalk and the road. It's been reworked by Gary Hunter. And enforcement of it, I hope, will happen in one sense. In the other sense, I hope we don't need to enforce it. Eventually, as the litter control officer gets more expert in litter control, I will try working this type of ordinance into enforcement. At least, I hope so.
Other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, member Sands.
When we discussed this earlier, I had a question about cleaning 18 inches into the gutter, particularly in the commercial areas uptown where cars are parked there. And it's talking down here, "Commercial premises should be maintained at the beginning and the end of the day." Well, my business maybe opens at 10:00, cars start parking up there at...
Eight.
Eight? Certainly by 9:00, it's parked up. And it's parked up well until 9:00 at night. So when am I gonna get that gutter cleaned? I think cleaning the sidewalks and cleaning the windows is something we should all do, but I'm just concerned that it might be difficult for people to get the gutters cleaned.
Yes.
I've seen owners or managers or whoever's cleaning the gutters sweep the stuff into the, yeah, the sidewalk, clean the sidewalk, sweep it into the gutter. They can certainly get it past the cars to do that. Having picked up a lot of trash on my west side with community members, usually the only car which you can't clean up is the ones directly under the tire, because you can't roll the car off the tire, off the material. So therefore, it's possible to clean between the cars, underneath the cars. It's not, it's not possible to take a giant dust room and do all that, but at the same time, it is possible to clean the stuff up. You could use everything from shock vacuums to your fingers. So, and again, I've done this from experience. The only one you can't get are the one that you have the two-ton car on top of. As I say, I don't, I don't really expect this to be enforced immediately, but we have quite a few laws that are on the books that, whether it was the 24-hour rule many years ago, or picking up after your dog. These laws, I hope, can influence actually some behavior. It'd make a pretty good city.
Member Bishop.
I have a question. Residential premise routing times citywide are daily 8 to 9:00. Does this mean that this is when the people are circulating to check the gutters?
It could be.
It could be. And noon to 1:00 commercial. What about, like, dirt and leaves?
I don't think I consider that litter most of the time.
Okay.
I mean, it depends. I mean, you have no control over it, I guess.
Okay, well, that's, I was just wondering what this really means. Okay.
Other comments? Ordinance 8807, an ordinance amending the 2007 Appropriation Ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is an ordinance that appropriates some money to be utilized to upgrade a house that the city owns on Central Avenue. City owns this house, leases it through Metropolitan Housing Authority. Over the past several years, the house has degraded for various reasons. It needs paint, roofing, insulation, new HVAC systems, and we're gonna get some assistance from Tri-County Community Action to do this, but we need to appropriate some money. So we're suggesting $4,000 from the unappropriated balance to the CDBG Fund, 248, transaction class 300. This is CDBG program funds. It's, I believe it's funds that we receive as lease payments from other properties that the city leases. And also $19,500 to Athens City Enhancement Fund, a fund that we utilize for operations like this periodically.
Other comments? On to ordinance 8907, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 41 Site Plan Review. This is introduced by all members of council. I believe member Phillips will be speaking to it.
Thanks, Mr. President. This ordinance is the site plan review section that we've been discussing in committee. This came to us as a recommendation in the city's comprehensive plan. We have addressed a few questions that came up from that. I am aware that the Chamber of Commerce had a meeting to go through this and has some questions and some recommendations. I wanted to give them an opportunity to hand that out to folks and talk to us about it. Do members of council have questions or comments before we do that? So I'd like to ask, Jennifer, are you gonna be speaking to this? And then, we are at first reading. If people want to discuss these in detail, I'd be happy to schedule a special committee meeting to do that. So this isn't intended to be a full, like, committee discussion of all of these points. I think Jennifer's gonna run through them and try and figure out a time that we can have an in-depth discussion. So, come on up.
Jennifer Simon, Athens Area Chamber of Commerce. Just wanna make the comment that overall, the site plan review process, I think, can be a very beneficial one for the city. I think they're an opportunity for all of us to work together to make this a good, strong process. As Debbie stated, we went through the ordinance thoroughly, but we still have a couple more folks that we want to have look at, at the ordinance. In fact, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow of our Government Affairs Committee to go through it. However, we felt responsible to get some comments back, as Debbie had asked us to do previously. I think, you know, just to sort of go through very, very quickly, and then we can get into more in-depth discussion, as you said. We, as we were going through, we recognized that the intent of this is obviously to make sure that development is in step with the regulations that are already on the books, and to make sure that there's a clear, defined process. In addition to that, however, we wanted to make sure that the part of the comprehensive plan that was not part of the ordinance is stated and made clear, which is that it's not necessarily an opportunity for people objecting to a project to prevent its construction. So, you know, we want that to be part of the intention of, as how we go forward. Also, defining single family under the exemptions piece as an R1 zone, looking at the parking exemption, the addition, we proposed addition of less than 20 rather than less than five. We can obviously get into the discussion of that. Defining a non-residential accessory building, looking at how this would affect, and Larry will come up in a few minutes and talk about small businesses, if that's, if that's okay, Debbie. The cost of producing 15 copies of all of the documentation that is within this, you know, I think, we've talked to a few developers and said that is, that's extremely costly to expect, that large of a number of copies of full plans. And then, and the real, one of the big questions is, upon planning commission approval, the site review plan is considered complete, and the building permit will be issued. It's having that understanding that if a developer or a small business for that fact, for the fact of the matter, comes in, works on going through every piece that's listed in the site plan review, meets all of those requirements, that there is an understanding that although we know Planning Commission has a yes or no vote, but that if all of that is met, once Planning Commission has made their recommendation or approved, that we move forward. So we also want to have some discussion related to that. There are some redundancies that we've pointed out. There were some questions about why the planned unit development portion was within the regulation, considering that it's been exempted in the previous portion, 41.02. We had questions about 41.06, about traffic, and is that just a general statement about traffic? Or is that a statement that says that every project's gonna have... that every project's gonna have, it will require a traffic impact study? We had, we talked about the noise, the nuisance portions. We talked about, you know, what is the reference to the code? I don't know if that's just a simple, you know, adding a reference to code within that section. And then we also had the question about what ca, in what cases would a bond be necessary? How do you define, again, materials in the first paragraph of Section 41.08? Have a clarification for Section 41.08, just asking that all requirements should be referenced, the code should be referenced within those requirements. So when a developer is looking at this process, they can very quickly go through and figure out how this re, how this relates to the code. Again, much of the checklist is what a developer already has to do, but there are components that we believe that we need to work on. One is that data is out there related to soil and percolation tests, or excuse me, related to soil, related to contours, two-foot contours as the standard, and adding additional regulations or requirements to that could, could lead to an estimated $10,000 or more per project. And we are, we will have Debbie from the architects that are part of the chamber. They have said that they would give us a greater idea about the expense of that, so we could share that with council. And again, traffic impact studies, we had talked previously about what kind of business would warrant a traffic impact study, how in-depth of a business, and then how much do those, how much do the studies cost? Who bears the impact study costs? Is it the developer, the city, etc.? Just questions that need to be clarified within, than the ordinance. And then what constitutes a minor or major change to the plan, and then there was a small typo at the end. And that's everything that we have for now.
Thank you.
But I'd like to ask Larry if you wouldn't mind come up and...
Yeah.
...make a few comments.
Larry Payne with the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce. I know many members of council in the past have shared my view about the importance of small locally owned businesses, especially when they develop into an empty existing structure. And while there are many good sections of this ordinance, I would urge you to work with the chamber to help ensure that parts of the legislation do not hinder or stop the very type of local businesses that we've been trying to create in the past. We're in the process of meeting with architects and developers, as Jennifer mentioned, tomorrow, and we have in the last couple of days, to get an idea of what some of these sections would cost local businesses. It's a little early, but an estimate is much as $15,000 in addition to the regular project. I wonder if businesses like Toscano's, Village Bakery, Max 50 Store in the past could have absorbed financially an extra burden of $15,000. So I just would ask you to work with us as we go and make this the best legislation as possible. Thank you.
Are there others wishing to speak, Brent?
I'm Brent Hayes. I actually live in Guy'sville, but I, I develop here in the city and pay taxes here, along with about 35 of my employees. So I guess I'm kinda representing those folks too. But those are all good points that Jennifer and, and Larry made. You know, in the last eight years, I think Athens has seen a lot of very positive growth. There seems to be a lot of momentum, and it seems like we're going, in my opinion, in a very positive direction and talking to folks that are looking to come to Athens, whether it be retail or, or locate in the McBe facility. Three years ago, there was a moratorium that was up that failed, I think, three to one. I think that the people spoke then when that, you know, by voting, and it went down. I'm, these are good points, as long as, I think the key is, is it's the Planning Commission. This goes before the Planning Commission. And I'm not up to speed on all this, but I think the Planning Commission is appointed by the mayor.
Yes.
If we were to have a mayor or that someone that was anti-development, and we had a Planning Commission that didn't support development, I don't care how you change this thing, if it's gotta go before Planning Commission, I think it could really stop the positive momentum, momentum that the city has going forward now. So I'm totally against Section 41 as it stands right now, and talk about it more in, in other meetings or the chamber I'm gonna meet with them tomorrow. But that's my biggest concern, is that it goes to the Planning Commission. And not knowing who's gonna be on Planning Commission worries me. Thank you.
Debbie, Mr. Hayes gave me a call earlier today, and a couple of the things that he asked me, I really was at a bit of a loss on. And the examples that he gave me, and Brent, if you don't mind, I'd kinda like to use a couple of the examples that you used in your conversation with me today, just so that we got a better idea. A percolation test is when you're trying to put in a septic tank, leach bed kind of thing. If we're talking about something that is hooking up to city sewer, why is that necessary? An example he also gave me of a traffic study that may be asked for, that is not defined, and who suffers the cost. He's working on Richland Avenue's McDonald's. Would that be something that would call for a traffic study, and who suffers the cost? And would we want to stop that project because of possibly that's something that would come out of a traffic study? I don't know the answer to those, but those are the kind of concerns that he brought up with me today that I, you know, I, I don't know that we'd thought all the way through. The two-foot standard on a contour, I don't know. That one seems reasonable to me, but anyway. Nancy?
On the traffic impact study, Bill, you were sitting next to me when we had that discussion.
I know.
And we were talking about, and they said it's very pricey, so the Service Safety Director would be in charge and would decide in those cases where they have more than 100 new vehicular directional trips during peak hour of generation. So it is defined, so we can lay that one to rest. And it wasn't, it was, you know, something below Taco John's, or whatever, no, the other one. Taco Bell, Taco whatever, on the East End. Or five, 500 new vehicular trips in the average day. That's what they were talking about. And so we're talking on the most extreme event.
Okay.
And so McDonald's wouldn't be a change of use. I don't think it would generate that many new trips. I don't think that it would generate the need for one of those studies, if we're talking about the example.
On the other hand, the people who live out there might say, "Yuppie."
I think that might, might be the concern, is who makes that decision?
The Planning Commission.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that what we're trying to do, and it depends, I mean, it's, it's all, what, what we're trying to do is make sure that the information is there and that it's not half-baked, as it's been sometimes in the past.
Oh, and when it's appropriate for a percolation study to be done, because my home does have a septic tank and leach bed, if there was something going up and not the availability of a sanitary sewer. So if it's appropriate, I think yes. You know, if a church would go from, on the four acres that my house presently is, it would be a very appropriate thing to ask for. But if we're talking about a Taco Bell going in, no, it isn't, you know, out on East State Street. So I don't know. Those are the kind of things that I'm just kind of...
And you wouldn't, I don't, you know, just looking at this, it doesn't say every single place has to have one. It says copies of soil logs and percolation tests. And that's under, so if it was, I mean, we do have in Article 27 areas that, that were actually flagged in the Villas operation because they were in areas that seemed to require additional attention. So maybe that would be the linkage we'd need to do, go back to Article 27 and say, those that are required. They use the perk test also, though, just for soil stability questions.
And runoff.
And runoff, yes.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't aware of it for any of those kind of things.
Jim had something?
So we can meet again?
No, I, I would just say, yes. What we're concerned about, I think, with this is, is twofold. We, this is not an anti-development thing. This is, this is saying, development is good if it's done carefully, and this is our attempt to make sure that we have all the information we need. But I think the point's been made by people who came to speak to us and by even this conversation we're having now, that there are instances where a specific development, particularly if it was a small, smaller development, may automatically opt out of a lot of these things and these requirements. And so somehow we need to put that language in there so that it's clear that these are required at a certain level of traffic, at a certain level of square footage, at a certain slope on the bank.
Yes, well, definitely.
All that, all that information. But if I'm building on a piece of flat ground somewhere, we may just need to look at more language.
What, what I propose doing, I think this is wonderful. I'm really glad to have input from so many people on this, because I firmly believe that when we hear from folks who are affected or potentially affected by the things that we're discussing, we can make better decisions. So I'm really glad that we're having this conversation. What I would like to propose is that we have a special committee meeting just to focus on this again. And I would propose this Thursday at, at 1:00, right before the Planning Commission meeting, because I, I know that some people already are planning to attend the Planning Commission meeting. So if, just to keep things moving along, we can do that, and just talk through these specific points, try to figure out, you know, what questions we can answer, where we can come to an agreement, and if necessary, have an amendment ready for next week. And if we are not ready, then we probably need to talk about tabling, to make sure we've got time to address it. But I, I would be happy to start with, you all that are gonna have a discussion with architects and developers tomorrow, then if we can meet on Thursday here at 1:00, I'm, I'm willing to talk through these point by point and just see how far we get. I, 'cause I don't want this to turn into a really in-depth discussion of every point right here in a regular session.
No, it, it should not. I think that's a good...
In full circle, I think that what we had is a group of planners that came and listened to the citizens who were not pleased with some of the ways that development had occurred. I mean, I could also echo my constituents who live on Oak Street and would like to know if it will be open or not open to that development, because they had no, they have no information about how it's going to go. So I think that, you know, the people who live in the town are concerned about the way development has gone. As Rosie a picture is JB paints of it, you know? It's just, there's the other side of it, and that is, oh, it's my neighborhood, and I'd like to know if there's gonna be more traffic down that road. And I think this is a good way to inform them. And there's, you know, we've never, that I know of, stopped anything on council. Now, I know some other people that have, but we haven't. I mean, we, I always think we try to make it better. That's my sermon.
Are there other comments on ordinance 89? Lance?
Lance, President of University of States, and listening to this, I'm trying to, am I correct, and this goes to the Planning Commission as part of the package in addition to what we're already taking there?
It's covered for the most part. We're talking about the ones that are not covered.
Not covered.
The items that aren't covered in that?
Yeah, so I don't think you have much there.
It doesn't apply to planned unit developments.
My only concern in this whole process is, and I don't know how we solve this, but JB Hayes mentioned that, you know, that there's gonna be some changes in council and planning commissions and everything else. One of the consistent things that would help us all is that if we could all open this book of process and be able to follow it, and follow it from the day we start, and it be the same no matter who we talk to, whether it's council, whether it's city administration staff or planning commission, or, that's where it gets so confusing. You think you've got one hurdle made, and then another one pops up and another one, or it isn't an issue here and it is there. So that's where I think...
Lance, believe it or not, I think this is a good step in that direction. Last Wednesday's the mayor's staff meeting, that was somewhat the comment that the Service Safety Director was talking about, the site review process, that at least we will come down to one document that lists off everything that is required. So...
I agree with that.
So I, I'm not too sure this isn't a step in the direction of what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Pass the resolution. I'm sorry. Please, come forward.
We've done the resolution.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lori Deal, and I live in the city. And I built a house on the east side. All I heard were complaints about the house I built on the east side, because I tore down a trailer that had a block building and built a beautiful home. All my neighbors complained about that. I tried to beautify my neighborhood, and you guys are concerned about the growth and everything in the community. I'm beautifying it. And all I got was criticisms. And it was really difficult, because everybody made it very difficult for me to build my house. I work with Lance and University of States, and those people are very happy to move out there. You guys are making it very difficult for them to come to this community.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I could just clarify, this wouldn't change anything for one or two family homes. It wouldn't apply to that at all. So I'm sorry that you had a difficult experience with that, but I don't think this would have affected your process.
It just still has to do about development and growth. It's all the same, residential or business.
It isn't covered by this order, residential, yours.
On to item number eight, announcements and other business.
Mr. President, I propose that we have a special session on the...
Next Monday.
...the ninth, the February 8th.
A week from tonight.
A week from tonight, 7:30.
Okay.
And work whatever committees we have around it.
That's my question.
Okay. Are there other committees?
And we'll include everything except, everything for second reading or first reading, at least the ones that I have, please. 84?
All items move forward, except...
There's one that we probably ought to hold up on. Is that the one that Amy wants to go for two weeks on? About 78. Should we have 78 up for reading?
Or the, what?
That would be, oh, no, wait a minute.
That's, I was gonna say.
Seventy. Is there anything in second or third reading that we shouldn't have up?
Second or third reading?
In this hypothetical section.
Well, I don't have anything.
All items moving forward unless the sponsor gets to the clerk of council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to schedule a planning and development committee meeting for Thursday at 1:00 in the afternoon. Here.
Items to include?
Eighty-nine.
A discussion of Resolution 89. Other committee meetings. Member Flowers.
If it matters, I can't make the Thursday meeting at 1:00. And yes, Transportation Committee to discuss street closing.
Okay. Other comments? Other announcements? Any other business going once, gone? Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.
Jim, why don't you do that?